Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ferndale City Council Meeting for Monday, July 23rd, 2018. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lee Smye, here. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Mayor Potempolika.
Here.
Councilmember Piana. And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Councilwoman Piana is still doing her Harvard studies, and she has an excused absence this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
Yeah, sure. Your Honor, I'd like to recommend we approve the agenda, removing regular Agenda Item C, based on feedback from council. I think there's some rework on the presentation she wants to do, so.
Support.
All right, any discussion on the agenda? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Potempolika.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Smye.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now to presentations, and we have just one presentation this evening, but a good one. The Beautification Awards. Is that going to be you, Robin, this evening?
As always, sir.
Awesome.
All right. Happy July. Let's see, which one is it? This one? No, it's not. Okay, thank you. All right, the first house that we will be recognizing for the Ferndale Beautification Award for July is Elm Channing, 464 Channing. Is Michael Duggard here?
Dugard, yes.
Dugard, all right, very good. If you'd like to come up, tell us a little bit about this house. We thought it's a wonderful, bright spot on the corner of Hilton and Channing, and there's quite a collection there of flowering plants. The house, I believe, was built back in 1962. How long have you been there?
Uh, just over three years.
You've done a wonderful job.
Thank you, yeah. When I moved in, it was the ugliest yard in the neighborhood. Easily, easily. It was, I was just a, this zone of property value going down all around it. But at any rate, as you can probably see with the impeach sign, I feel that anything you do is a political act. Even choosing not to be political is a political choice. And, you know, pesticide and chemical fertilizer runoff is the number-one source of contamination of the Great Lakes. Getting rid of the grass reduces that. Not to mention, you know, just like with certain things going on in DC, just one color is not fun, so I like to get rid of the grass. But yeah, so that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Excellent. So if you'll stand right here, so we can get a pic of him, okay? Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
The house is beautiful. That's awesome.
All right, the second house goes to the southwest quadrant of Ferndale, 584 Gardendale. Now, we go on the nominations that are sent to us, okay? On occasion, we will, when absolutely necessary, make some nominations ourself, if we don't receive any for a particular quadrant. We have been accused of picking sterile, unexciting gardens.
By who?
I don't know how that happens.
By who? Who would say such a thing?
Well, we won't go there. You know, Mama always said, "If you can't say something good, nip it." Well, this one is definitely not sterile. And for those of you who may not recognize this house, you may recognize the name of the person who lives there. Cat Listening. He's at 584 Gardendale. Is Cat here? Come on up here, dude. He's a very well-known Ferndale citizen and a new daddy.
Oh.
So tell us a little bit about this.
I moved in 2009, and it was completely bare. There was nothing in the front yard. And basically, everything that I do in my home gardening is cat-sized, and it was made for my cat, to be viewed from cat level, you know, cat height, about a foot or foot-and-a-half high. The paths are cat-wide. The tunnels are cat-tall. It's created for a cat, inspired by a cat, and will live on forever for my cat.
Awesome. That's pretty great.
Use your bed.
What?
Oh, wait, sorry.
Awesome. Yeah, we'll talk about it. I know, right? You said it was going to be an interesting night. The next house is in the northeast quadrant. This one is 2188 Manatee. Is Maggie Masters here? Your husband, all right. Well, come, and your name?
Nicholas.
Nicholas? Awesome. So, we like the way that they incorporated the hard surfaces in, and sometimes when we go back and look at these pictures, you know, we pull them up on Zillow, and that's been there for a few years, and we really do see how much work has been put into yards, and it makes it even that much more interesting. This particular yard is very cool, and it uses the hard surfaces with the plants sort of scattered amongst it. So tell us about it.
Uh, yeah, I've been living there for eight years, but when I met my wife, I was about to just turn it all into grass, because I didn't know how to deal with it. So this is entirely my wife's award. She's out there almost.
Well, her name is right there.
Yes, that's why we did that. She's out there almost every day, working on it. It's what she loves. In the house, we just got new siding on it. This year, it was all old asbestos siding that was falling off and everything.
Absolutely.
In the past couple of years, we've been paying special attention to putting things in there for pollinators. We got some milkweed growing in there. We've grown lots of them on our caterpillars this year.
Terrific.
And I can't tell.
Very good, sir.
What's in the, I can't tell, though, is that grass in the front that is un-mowed, or is that something else going on there?
Uh, this grass is probably pretty un-mowed.
Robin has this habit of catching the pictures when they're un-mowed. All right, just wondering. It's beautiful, by the way. That's beautiful. Three for three, Robin.
I know, right?
Yeah.
It's a good month. Northwest Quadra, this one is 303 West Drayton, and it's a lovely four-bedroom Stucco Colonial Revival, built back in 1922. Is Bradley and Stacy here?
Yes.
Come on up.
Awesome.
This is all his award.
I mow the grass.
Now, are you Bradley or Stacy?
I'm Bradley.
Okay.
I mow the grass.
I'm Dave.
I pick up the dog.
It's comedy night at the city council.
And they took a picture when the grass was cut, which was kind of them.
Yeah, we just had the step, uh, fixed, and that wasn't painted yet, so there's like this gray blotch there. So we purchased the house in 2013. I've lived, actually, in Ferndale since 94, but we bought this house, it was an estate sale, and there was, it was a blank canvas. There was one, like, stick weed that was about 20 feet tall that was standing out of there. So just through the last five years, we've just, we've moved stuff, planted stuff, and we finally, I think, got to where we want it to be. The one thing about our house that's rare is it has a slate roof.
Awesome.
Labor love.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. So we've got, if you all would stand here and take your award.
Do they still get lawn signs, too, Robin? Do they still get the lawn signs?
Yes, those were placed, I believe, Friday, and they get a letter letting them know that they've won, and that's how people know to be here for the city council meeting. The next award, though, is for our annual Cone Flower Award. Since the cone flower is the flower of Ferndale, we do an award each year in July to celebrate the cone flowers that are blooming right now. And this particular one is at 640 East Marshall. West. West, sorry. You are absolutely correct. West Marshall. Built 1927, is Jessica Paul, here. Hi, Jessica. Come on up. Hi. Jessica, I saw the cone flowers for about three weeks, and I'm watching it going, "I really hope someone nominates this house," and then it got so really, really dry, and they were just shriveling it up, and I'm going, "Water them, water them!" And it rained. Thank you, Jesus. Now, how long have y'all been there?
Uh, since 2011.
Wonderful, excellent. Well, good job.
Thank you.
It looks wonderful.
Yeah, it actually started because I wanted to grow some tomato plants somewhere, and my mom said, "People don't like you to do that in the front yard. You better make it pretty."
She's a wise woman. Finally, this month's commercial winner. If anyone's been over on the west side of Nine Mile, I, we were just really excited with all the work that they've done at the Dairy Queen there. They've made it not only attractive, but also safer for their patrons, which was very impressive. Is there anyone here from the Dairy Queen to accept the award? I'll stop and get a Blizzard and give them the sign. All right. Finally, couple of reminders. The August Beautification nominations are due by August 14. The Block Beautification, where we nominate an entire block in the city, is due September 29th. Follow us on Facebook and Instagram. And also, now, to get to the squeaky toys. For those of you who may be interested, July 31st at 6:30 at the Ferndale Public Library. The library and the Beautification Commission is going to be hosting an ice cream social and a civic group expo. All of these various organizations that you see there on the right-hand side are going to be participating. We are doing this as a way of helping people know what the organizations are, what they do in the city, how they can be invited to be active in those organizations, or at least find out something about them in case they need some assistance from those organizations. So we encourage everyone to come out to this. I'm sorry? And have some ice cream. Ed Burns at the library has been very, very helpful in coordinating this, and because they do have a budget, they're springing for the ice cream, so come out and enjoy some. Thank you so much.
We have a good Karma Club?
Yes. What do they do?
That's awesome, but I don't know who they are.
Come to the meeting and find out.
I guess I'll have to come to the, that's right.
Karma Camellia.
That's awesome. Well, Robin, you guys always, you never disappoint. Thank you very much. Thank you for the toys.
You're welcome.
I see that it's actually a pet toy, which is kind of.
It is, it's a pet toy.
It's kind of cool. I don't have a pet. Does anyone here have a pet that wants a toy, an extra toy? Raise your hand, seriously. Come on up. Well, you have a cat. Do cats play? All right. There you go.
I'm giving mine to G D Davis.
All right.
For her pet.
Excellent. All right, so that concludes our presentations this evening. Next item of business would be our call to audience, and this is your opportunity, if you're here in person and you'd like to address council on any issue that's not on the agenda, because we'll give you an opportunity to talk to those when we get to that part of the agenda. But if you'd like to come up and address council on any issue, anything on your mind, come on up, give us your name, your address, and you get three minutes to tell us what is on your mind. Good evening.
My name is Sherry Stevens. I live at 500 East Nine Mile.
Excellent.
I've been a resident there at that particular location for five years, this year, and I feel so safe, so comfortable. I just, I had not planned on moving. I had planned on being there until they carried me out of there. And I was just informed that they're thinking about re, tearing down our building, rebuilding it up, and my concern is this: we are low income. I am a senior citizen, total disability, and I am concerned because I don't, I hadn't planned on moving, and I'm interested in knowing what are they going to do with us? Do you know anything about it? And that I really wanted to express how comfortable living in Ferndale and safe it is for me being a senior.
I'm glad to hear that.
And how the police are always there to assist us. I've gotten locked out of my car, they come and let me in. I got locked out of my house, they came and opened the door at 4 o'clock in the morning. And I really don't want to move, and I see that they're building up around here and everything, and it's kind of scary because it's really, really nice, and I want to be in nice, and I just wanted to let you know what my concerns are, and I don't know if you have anything to do with it, or if you even know about it, but I wanted to let you know as a citizen of Ferndale how important it is for me to continue to have my home to live in.
Thank you. I appreciate the nice things you said about Ferndale. And I will just say this, we do know about it, and in fact, at 6 o'clock this evening, we had a special council meeting to talk about the potential changes at the Housing Commission. Heather from the Housing Commission is here, and I think what I'll do is, because I'm guessing there might be a couple more people that want to address that issue, but once you're finished, I'll give Heather an opportunity to address any of the questions or concerns that came up. How's that?
Heather has been really informative for us, and to think she's, she's trying to keep us informed, but a lot of things she's not quite sure of right now.
Yep.
And I want Heather to know that we really appreciate Heather, and since she's been here, how things have improved at the building, and that it's not that we're being mean to her or anything, but we're scared.
Sure.
Because we want to know where we're going to live.
Totally understand.
So Heather, we like you. We love you, Heather. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Appreciate it. All right. Good evening.
Evening, how you doing? I'm David Mitchell. I'm with Detroit Eviction Defense. Been coming and helping do stuff at Autumn House for over five years. I'm glad to hear you already had a meeting at 6 o'clock. I think that meeting might have been more informative if you had had any tenants there. We want it on your radar that the Rental Assistance Demonstration, RAD as it's called, is a program that's happening all over the country, and in our opinion, you need to go far and wide in your search of getting information on that, because most of the results on it have been quite negative. And it's going to take some time, because it has to do with privatizing public housing, but we're asking the, uh, this, this panel of people to really consider it and consider what, say, you have over the Ferndale Housing Commission and its decisions. We're relieved that RAD has, is only being applied for right now and has not yet been approved, and we have encouraged everyone at the Housing Commission, as well as now y'all, to deeply consider what the long, those long-term consequences are. Folks up there probably know, we got Withington, and we got Autumn House, two public housing units in Ferndale. They're something that are important to keep here, and we want to see them here. And the idea of, and not that it's decided, but of tearing down Autumn House, while there's lots of discussions to be had there, one thing that hasn't added up to residents is what's going to happen to them in the meantime. So I'm sure you're going to hear that as a common question, because the math just isn't there. And in terms of hearing from Heather, we look forward to it. Been hearing Heather, from Heather for six weeks, so I doubt we're going to hear anything too new. I would look forward to any new information. But a couple of buzzwords on the RAD program, as you all are doing your own research on it, any discussion of right to return is a red flag, and that is, I'm speaking to past RAD programs. And not a RAD program, but an attempt to privatize housing in a similar fashion before Ben Carson got very excited about RAD. You should Google 1214 Griswold. It's a property downtown Detroit. It was for seniors for 25 years, and about five, uh, three years ago now, all of those people were moved out despite promises that they'd be moved back in, they'd have the right to return, it'd be market, they'd be, have a subsidized market rate. None of those people live in that building, and the rent is $1,800 a month. So there's plenty of warning signs out there, and I'll just leave you with two questions. One is, uh, what are, what is this body going to do to educate itself about the RAD program and what that means to the residents of Autumn House and Withington and all public housing? And then, secondly, there's going to be tough decisions on that, but you're going to need to ask yourselves which side of that, that you're on. Thank you.
Thank you. And might I just say that our emails are on the website, and you're welcome to send us any background or information, you know, that you would like us to see.
Cool, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Cassandra Welber. I live at 500 Autumn House. My concern is Heather has been informing us as much as she knows. However, I wasn't aware that there was a meeting at 6 o'clock anything today, but my concern is, is at this point, after they do the lottery pick, the people that's not picked, where are they going to go and live? Where are they going to stay? We're still low income. Our income hasn't changed. Now, the tearing down the building, you know, that may be y'all's plan. Y'all's plans has changed, but our, you know, our incomes haven't changed. So where does that leave us? That's my question. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Robert Day. I'm also working with Detroit Eviction Defense and have been for quite a while, and I'm retired from Legal Aid and Defender. Worked here with tenants from Ferndale and from Autumn House for probably five years now. So it's been a really good experience, because the tenants in Ferndale Public Housing have organized, and they really helped to turn some things around here. And if, if you all know about it, the previous executive director had to be thrown out because she was robbing tenants.
Well aware.
And the, when we first went to public housing meetings, they called the police on us, and if tenants tried to get up and say a word, they would call the cops on them. I'm not kidding you, I'm telling you the truth. And we came here, tenants, and some of us came here those years ago, and the tenants organizing and pressing forward made some important changes. But right now, we've come back because the tenants have asked us to come back, and because they're scared, and they're scared for good reason, because most are people with disabilities. All are low income, all qualify for public housing, and they're concerned about the threats to tear down Autumn House and what will happen to them. And what we've tried to do, and what we're trying to do now, is to say this is part of attack in this country against people in public housing and against low-income folks. It's not separate from attacks on Medicaid or attacks on the right to organize. This is a wholesale attack on public housing, and it's a plan and determination on the part of federal government to privatize public housing, and you all know that's what's going on here. And so the concerns about gentrification, getting private developers in here, what happens to people on disability? A lot of people have incomes of $750 a month. They need public housing. And the threat, when they say right to return and all that, people know damn well that means they're going to get put out, they're going to get displaced, and then there's no real guarantee where they're going to be able to come back to or where they will end up. So it's a real fear for people. What we're, the tenants have organized a new tenants' union there, which we support and are working with, but the tenants, and on behalf of the tenants, we're asking that all information be shared. So any reports you all have, any plans, any proposals, any interest from private developers or nonprofit developers, the tenants have a right to know. And when you have these meetings, invite the tenants, too, because they're the ones that are most affected. And I ask you to take a side. You take a side, on the side of people with disabilities and people in public housing and against this damn administration and the attacks on public housing.
Sir, watch your language, okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Miriam Pickens.
Hi.
Hi. I live in Southfield. I've been working with the, the tenants and the residents at Autumn House for a few years as part of Eviction Defen- Detroit Eviction Defense. And the one thing that I wanna say is that we have a responsibility to our community and to the people that live in our community to make sure that they have safe and affordable housing. A lot of times affordable housing has been used as a, a way to move people out because affordable to whom? I mean, you can say something is affordable and charge $1,000. And if you only make an $800 a month, it's not affordable. So I think that the kind of concerns that the tenants are, are dealing with have to be, become the concerns of your body too. And I think that you need to take into account people that are older, people that are disabled, people through life circumstance don't have the ability to come up with the money that this new economy is asking for. And I think that if y'all would keep that in mind and involve the residents in your discussions and in your decisions and not try to jump onto something like a RAD program because it sounds like maybe it's the only way out or the only way to get money, I think that y'all owe it to the community to look for new avenues of financing and to look for new avenues so that we can keep a community strong and together. And that's what I would encourage y'all to do.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Terry Crocker. I live at 500 East Nine Mile. We was promised after the buildings get tear down, the residents will come back to here. But I wanna know how true is that? Me and my neighbors, I call them family, we are very concerned. We just know, just make the right decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Hi. My name is Kat Listening. I live on 584 Gardendale Street, um, for nine years. And it's a throughway from Eight Mile to Marshall. And 50 miles an hour, 60 miles an hour. I know this has been brought up before. What does it take to petition or get, get a speed bump somewhere along there? And I don't mean on the first block. I mean on the second block because the town, the new townhomes are there. And I think they're gonna have a speed bump down, down on the, that, that lower block or something like that. But we need a, we need a bump because we, it, children, 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 children up the street. Pets, 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 pets. And, you know, I, we need a speed bump. What does it take to get?
So Joe, um, you got the expert sitting right next to you. Do you wanna just address the process of, or is that, is that you, Jordan? I'm sorry. Is it Jordan? The, the, of the petitioning for a speed hump?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a process in place. Someone give me one of my cards.
Awesome. Go on up and speak at the mic just so that
Oh, sure.
the folks at home can hear.
So there is a process to apply for that. Uh, it involves sort of petitioning your neighbors, working with us. And we, we run some, some preliminary studies to kinda look at how that might be deployed. There's, you know, the thresholds that we look at as well. But if you reach out to the community and Economic Development Department, we can talk you through that process. If you're thinking your street needs one of those, we call them traffic calming devices. There's a bunch of different strategies. Uh, reach out to us and we'd be happy to kinda talk that through with you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
No problem. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Cool.
All right. So before I ask Heather to come up, is there anyone else that would like to address counsel this evening on any issues not on the agenda? Heather, do you wanna just briefly come up and, and maybe address some of the questions specifically that have been raised?
Sure. I really appreciate people coming out and opening up the, the conversation even more publicly. We've had, um, a couple of meetings at each building thus far. And we will have, um, regularly scheduled monthly meetings at each building going forward. Um, and, you know, we need to have this open dialogue and really hear, um, people's concerns and address them as, as they come up. I think one thing that I would state publicly and firmly is that as a board, the Ferndale Housing Commission is absolutely committed to preserving permanently affordable housing for low-income families within this community. And to us, that means the 30% income threshold for calculating your rent. It's a real definition of what affordable housing means. Um, and they've, they discussed at their last public meeting their commitment to pulling the plug on this process if we discover somewhere along the way that indeed the protections aren't what we believe them to be, that there is a problem with preserving our housing on a long-term basis. Um, so that's framing their decision-making process, but it is going to be a process. Um, our understanding is that it's a regulatory obligation, the absolute right to return for residents. Um, and as I expressed to you, we as a commission go beyond the basic requirements. We're absolutely committed to making this very difficult, very challenging, very scary process as good for our residents as possible. Their care and well-being is at the heart of this. And that's why we're interested in making real improvements to their properties and their homes.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
And more discussions to come, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else who would like to address counsel during call to audience? If not, all right, closed call to audience. And we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless, uh, council removes something from the consent agenda. So let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the regular minute, meeting minutes of July 9th and the special meeting minutes of July, uh, the special meeting minutes of July 9, 2018. Item B is the approval of a special event permit for the 2018 Oktoberfest on October 5th to the 7th, 2018, and to authorize the mayor to sign the license agreement. Item C is the approval of repairs to the booster pump number three at a cost of $4,195 and that the expense be charged to the water and sewer fund. Item D is the approval of the replacement of the cooling and ventilation control panel at City Hall at a cost of $12,980, the expense to be charged to the general fund, make facilities maintenance account. Item E is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office and of course, subject to review by the council finance committee. Uh, what is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
Move by Leaks May.
Go ahead, please.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Leaks May and supported by Martin. Now, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All right. Hearing none. Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes. Thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving now to the regular agenda. Item A is a consideration of the appointment to the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission of Stephanie Fleischer, Brittany Ha- Haaskew, and Linda Ashley. I'm sorry, Brittany, that I'm butchering your last name. Uh, but again, appointments to the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission. Are any of those individuals here, by the way?
I can introduce.
Okay, please do. Yes.
So the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission has had some turnover and we're excited to welcome these three candidates that have been recommended by the chair and executive body of the Arts and Culture Commission. Stephanie Fleischer has a great background. Uh, she's a marketing coordinator at City of Troy but graduated from the College of Creative Studies in graphic design. So she has a strong background in the arts. And these are all Ferndale residents, of course. Uh, Brittany Haaskew, um, is a, um, Economic Development Corporation Employee Communications Assistance Team. She's looking to get involved in the community. Previously, she's, uh, been executive director of the Old Town Commercial Association and brings a lot of really great business community and activism. And Mayor, guess where she went to school?
Michigan State.
Michigan State. Linda Ashley, uh, currently is a, uh, uh, an owner of a public relations firm, which is a skill set that I think the Arts Commission, uh, will benefit from. She's, uh, also got a background in marketing and communications with her, uh, masters from Wayne State and her bachelor's from University of Michigan. So I would, at this point, uh, like to move that we appoint, uh, Stephanie Fleischer, Brittany Haaskow, and Linda Ashley to the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission.
Support.
For terms ending as listed in the packet. Sorry.
Moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. And I would just add that, uh, these are mayoral appointments with the approval of all of you. Uh, I certainly concur. I think you know it's my habit, if you're a liaison to one of these committees, to, uh, to, um, ask for your guidance and advice. So Dan, I appreciate, uh, Councilman Martin, I appreciate your, uh, your perspective on this. And I think the Arts and Culture Commission for finding three great members, so.
True.
Any other discussion on these, on these appointments? All right. If not, Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes. Thank you. That, uh, those appointments are adopted. Moving on now to the second regular agenda item. Item B is the consideration of the MM RMA fiscal year 2019 contribution. Uh, who's, who's introduce that item?
I can, Marnie.
Marnie?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the MMA, MM RMA contribution is basically our premium payment for our, um, self-insured coverage through the MM RMA. Um, every year we are asked to pay a certain amount that goes towards covering our, our needs as, um, for insurance. Um, there will also be a distribution that will be coming through MM RMA. They, um, as an organization, take their profits and what they don't need over and above what they need for their costs, they distribute amongst their members. And that's based on how many members they've had, how long you've been a member. We've been a member of MM RMA since 1983. So we do get a, a bigger share of someone who would have the same needs who was not a member as long. So at this point, to, um, pay our insurance bill, we're asking for $745,921.
What is the, the return?
It should be.
$38,000.
How much? And does that stay in the same account to pay future, uh, insurance premiums or? Yeah. All right. Any, uh, questions of clarification or motion for this item?
Is there an opportunity to adjust any of the deductibles in order to moderate the 4.4% annual increase?
Well, a couple of years ago, we did raise our self-insured retention from $150,000 to $250,000. And that did, uh, lower our premiums to a certain extent. Um, and that was, um, approved by council a couple of years ago after we determined that, um, we haven't had a case that fell into that range. So it was prudent for us to make that reduction. So that is, um...
I think my question is more around the deductible. The vehicle physical damage is $1,000 per vehicle. Fire EMS replacement cost is $1,000 per vehicle. Property and crime is $1,000 per occurrence. That seems like a really low deductible for a city with the resources that we have.
Okay.
I, I don't know, like, we're bumping them up to $5,000 or $10,000, per instance, if, or even if we want to. But I, you know, it's like, would I call Marty at State Farm? I play with my deductible to, you know, get the premium when I want it.
Sure. We can do that.
It's worth exploring.
Because it's a significant, I mean, we have to do it, obviously, but it's,
Yeah.
you know, the increase is $31,000. Apparently, we need an ambulance.
Uh, is there a motion?
Uh, is there a motion in the packet?
I move to approve the FYE 2019 contribution of $745,921 and authorize the city clerk as the city's member representative to accept the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority Coverage Proposal and Stop Loss Participation Agreement as submitted by city clerk.
Is there support?
I, I'd like that to be changed to accommodate my request. Because I don't wanna wait another year if we can mitigate an increase to say that we ask the clerk to investigate adjusting the deductible. I almost think it's, unless you're time-sensitive to do this, I almost would, is rather wait till the next meeting. You can call and ask if there's a way to mitigate this.
They, um, well, they, they can't release our distribution until we pay our contribution. But I'm happy to let them know that we need more information.
But do we put the contribution, or the distribution at risk at all?
I don't think it's at risk. It's just a delay.
It's based on last year, so it's not at risk.
Okay. And we're not gonna bounce a check if we don't get it this week versus?
Uh, don't.
Okay.
We're one of the founding members as well, so I'm assuming that they'll accommodate a slight delay.
Definitely worthwhile. I just look at some of these deductibles as low for city our side. Let's, we can save some money. Let's do it. I mean, my preference would be that we, um, wait until we can investigate this further at this point.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are the directions clear? We'll take this up maybe at the next meeting?
Next meeting. Yeah, whatever you need.
That'd be great. All right. Excellent. Then we will table that item. Um, item C has been removed and also until the next meeting. So we'll go to regular agenda. Item D, which is the consideration of the purchase of a Horton fire truck. And Fire Chief Sullivan, you wanna introduce that item?
Mayor, council, um, is that time to replace our rescue or, as everyone calls it, an ambulance? And, uh, behind me here is Captain John Twight, who is our EMS coordinator and handled the research into this and can explain any questions council would have.
Waiting for questions or do you have any?
Any, any questions would be appreciated. Uh, we did a lot of research. This wasn't something that we took lightly. Uh, our, our other ambulance has lasted us longer than we expected. Uh, we, we got more of the life out of it than we had hoped. And this ambulance that we're looking for, we've adjusted our timeframe on how long we expect the ambulance to last based on how long this one lasted. Um, we are in need. The ambulance is, is starting to have maintenance issues more frequently. And, uh, the hope would be with the approval of this tonight that we can start the build process and hopefully in about 200 days have a new ambulance.
Could you walk us through a little bit about the research and where you are with the current ambulance that you're requesting to purchase and some of the changes?
Sure. Absolutely. The current ambulance that we have is a 2007 Horton. And it, uh, it, it has served us well. But as the EMS industry has changed, so has our needs and, and what we needed in an ambulance. So in the packet, I outlined a few things that we've increased, such as an extended cab. This was to allow for, we've had quite a few situations where we've had family members on scene, single moms, single dads with their children. We have no way of transporting their children to the hospital. Uh, so we've looked at getting a, a second row of seats and maybe taking their car seats with us. That's been one occurrence. Another occurrence that we've had is we've had children born. And we've had to call a second ambulance to transport the infant because we have the mom on the stretcher and no way to secure the, the infant. So, and obviously, uh, we don't wanna separate a, a mom and an infant. But we can keep them in the same vehicle and get them to the hospital at the same time. It makes everybody a little more comfortable. Some of the other things that we've added is, is blanket warmers and IV warmers. We've currently are putting our IV fluids on the dash in the winter to heat them. Uh, this is obviously not a, a great, safe method, but it's a very effective method. And, uh, so we're looking at, at, and putting those things in the ambulance so that we can lessen the, uh, incidents of causing somebody to become hypothermic while we're giving them a fluid therapy. Also, this ambulance has liquid springs, the one we're looking at now. Our current ambulance has air ride. Uh, one of our main complaints that we get frequently on our surveys that we provide to our citizens that we transport is our ride is, is awful. Uh, the, uh, and that has been, that is a direct quote from a couple of them. And liquid springs will solve that problem. Many of the neighboring communities have gone to liquid springs in their ambulances. And they have seen their survey results increase. So we're, we're thinking that will fix some of that. And for somebody with a broken bone or back problems, a smoother ride out to the hospital would be very favorable.
So I do have a question. Are we ready for questions?
If you're done, Karen.
I am. All set.
Okay. Sure.
Um, so the $175,000 that was, um, budgeted, um, was that the amount? What was the amount of the last vehicle from Horton's? I was just, just curious.
I couldn't tell you the number of the last vehicle with the cost was, but I had put 350 in the budget because ambulance costs were going up. Then we found through a different supplier other than HGAC government purchasing in a group, a Horton for $175,000. By the time we went to this budget and had it planned as a CIP in, in our budget, those vehicles are all sold out, and that frame and model are no longer available. When we started looking, we found the cost of things started to skyrocket, and a big portion of it was because of the upcoming steel and aluminum metals import tariffs. Even though they hadn't been passed, it's kind of like sending something in the New York Times, the stock market reacts to things. The builders reacted to it because by the time you, six months to a year to build one of these special vehicles, so they figured they might be incorporating that cost down the road, so they told us, 12,000, about 12,000 to be added to this vehicle due to that alone, and that's just coming from the manufacturers, it isn't something we guesstimated or added into there.
If I may, just a tangential, tangential to that. So, if the tariffs don't go into effect, they're going to give us the 12,000 back?
I'm assuming that would be, yes, with the manufacturer.
We have that in the contract?
Well, we don't have a contract, but we will definitely put that in the contract if it's not there. I'm sure Dan heard that loud and clear, right?
Because I, I think it's, here's my editorial, to throw just a random $12,000 increase on over cost of a tariff that hasn't occurred yet, when you've got a domestic supply that's competitive, I, it makes my, makes my economics degree burn.
I agree.
So, I think this is just taking advantage.
And for your edification, councilman, that it wasn't just Horton, the other three manufacturers we went to did the same thing. I don't know that they all threw 12,000 in, but they all said there would be a substantial added cost.
Yeah, thank you.
I was considering that you're going with the, the same company, so considering the last rescue vehicle lasted, what, four years over the expected time? Perhaps we, I don't know, did we save as far as the maintenance and, and things during that time, or?
Can you repeat the question, I'm sorry?
Okay. The, the four years over, did we even, did we save during that time? What I mean is that, are we, what am I trying to say?
We certainly, we certainly did. The, the whole idea when we purchased the medium-duty ambulance over the lighter duty frames that we were purchasing before was to get a longer life. At the time, we were getting about five to six years out of an ambulance. That ambulance, we projected seven to eight years, and it's, by the time it's out of service is going to have 11 to 12 years on it. And so, we certainly did get the bang for the buck by going to the medium-duty, which is why we are absolutely recommending the medium-duty for this ambulance, because we can, we're, we're pretty confident we can get 10 years out of it comfortably, and then we'd be looking at replacement of that.
I, I guess what I'm trying to say now is that, what were the maintenance cost estimate for the four years that it went over?
As far as, I, I'd have to look to see what the maintenance costs were. We, we had a lot of problems with air springs. That was one of the major repair items on the ambulance was, and that's where the liquid springs come in. We've had some issues with the, the boot that goes between the cab and the chassis. That was another reoccurring problem that Horton has indicated that they fixed, and, but those were two, really, the two main things we're having an issue with on that vehicle right now.
And the upgrades on this new one would?
I believe the upgrades, the liquid springs on this will, will make all, the whole vehicle last longer because it's going to reduce the wear and tear from the balance of the vehicle. The interior of the back of the ambulance is starting to show some signs of shaking from the rough roads and the rough ride.
That's it for me.
Can I, my, my question is related to that, so if you don't mind me asking, I, I feel like this is the part I need further clarification on, because the part that confused me was this. The original estimate was 175, and this would have been on a lighter weight chassis. The argument, and, and the argument, and, and we thought that would last for five to six years. The argument was that we should spend $100,000 more, but for a heavier weight chassis, because the lighter one would last five to six years, but the last one lasted 11 years. So, and, and this, and the heavier weight is estimated to last 10 years. So, do you see my sort of confusion of, well, how do you know that another lighter weight chassis wouldn't last again nine or 10 years, and we'd save $100,000? That was sort of the, that's where I was...
Sure, sure.
It's, it's a big investment in a heavier chassis when the last one didn't require, didn't only last five or six years. So, that's where, that's what's the part that's confusing to me. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Mayor, that, that one was the, originally, I had 350 in because I knew the costs were going up.
Okay, so it was never going to be 100?
But we did find a bid out purchase to multiple states for 175. I thought that was going to cover it. When we asked about that, those have all been sold out, apparently on an older chassis with the box, so it's no longer available at the time we're looking to buy. It was valid at the time, and I thought it would be perfect for us, even though it was lighter, but it was definitely a good price for a Horton.
So, then, are you saying there are no more light, lightweight chassis vehicles available?
Yeah, a lot of it has to do with the emissions thing, there's certain amount of frames that have certain emissions, and then each year has been kicking up the emissions for public safety, so.
Okay.
We're up to it, like, our last truck that you bought for us is, is an emissions burn-off, it's got to run every so, 45 minutes every so often to burn off for the EPA standard for that type of truck. So, this also has new emissions and added, and we also have a cot thing that has to be added in because they now have to be rollover proof with the new federal law. So, the cot can't just be connected, it has to connect and stay with a patient seat belted in when it rolls over three times in testing. No one is going to roll over a Ferndale ambulance three times, so just, that's clear, but it has to meet that federal standard.
So, is the 350,000 still, which is budgeted, and now you're...
No, councilman, when we dropped it in...
Oh, you dropped it.
For your edification, the last one we purchased was 181,645. Thank you, Cheryl, enter a quick BSNA check.
Yes, councilmember?
I have two additional questions. The four-way camera feature, is that an add-on, or is that standard on this thing?
It's, it's on it, but we can remove that to save cost. That, that's an external thing, so, kind of like a backup camera, you see in all directions, so if family or anyone's approaching the vehicle, the driver knows before moving the vehicle in any direction. It's a recommended keep as safety goes, but I don't...
Do we know what the incremental cost for it is?
Hold on.
We don't have the incremental cost for that, that was, that was an add-on, it is something that can be removed. It was, we like it for the safety aspect, as the chief was saying, and it was also for crew safety, because when we're working in the back of the ambulance concentrating on a patient, if police isn't available, or if they've left scene because we thought everything was okay, somebody, some people can approach. Our crews can now monitor 360 degrees around the ambulance. As far as incremental costs, we did not incrementally ask, except for a few specific things, while we were asking, looking into the price of this ambulance.
Okay, my second question is, what's the, the current value of the old, are we going to, can we sell this on a, I don't know, ambulance black market and pick up some few bucks? I mean, how does that work?
I think the DPW already has their eyes on it to replace the water department vehicle, which is our old white ambulance, so, and I, I believe they're taking really good care of it every time we take it in for that very purpose.
Well, the mom in me is going to say, keep the camera, but that's me.
No, I don't object to the camera, I, it feels more like a command center now, you know, like one of these tactical command centers. Of course, you have to have, it'll be federal law, you have to have the rear camera to back up to, but when you talk about the, to the right and to your left and those four cameras, like, you know, I, I, it just feels like more of a tactical command center than an ambulance. But if you, if there's an argument to be made for safety on the two sides, then I guess I'm okay. Just don't...
The argument is that violence towards EMS personnel is, is raising all the time, so that if police are busy, even if they're busy on scene with other people causing trouble, we can see if there's someone. Because a lot of times when people hurt each other, they want to finish the job before we get them out of there to the hospital.
All right, we'll just unarm the thing, please.
What is the impact of an additional 110 out of the capital budget? Does it, does it impact future purchases? I don't know what the fire department capital improvement budget is off the top of my head, but 110 isn't nothing. Does it have an impact on future purchases?
I think we've already, I can, if you don't mind.
Anyone can feel this one?
Yeah, we're, we're kind of working through that right now. In the past, it's kind of been, oh, okay, and check, but now we are working with the departments to see where we can offset those costs in other ways, so we'll be working with them to figure out what we could do, maybe in some other areas, and if we can't, we can definitely, you know, see what our other options are, but we have been working with that, this, this year's the first year we've kind of implemented a, if we go over, we need to know where we're going to get that money and how we're going to address that in the future.
And the garage space accommodates the extended ambulance?
Yes.
Okay. I'll never not ask that when you buy a vehicle.
That is a very good question.
We know how to pack them in, councilman.
No doubt.
All right. Other questions? Or a motion?
If you don't mind, though, I would like to add one more thing. We do want to readjust the motion notes because we may go out for financing depending on the rate. If I could, can I read a modified?
Yes, you may, please.
To approve the purchase of a new Horton Type 1 2019 International Navistar 4300 Crew Cab chassis, purchase price not to, the purchase price not to exceed $285,000 from capital count number 101-336-977500, vehicle purchases with financing options to be researched and brought back to council as submitted by Captain Twight. And the reason why we want to bring it back is we can at least put the order in to get them started with some kind of field.
While we figure out financing?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Moved by Councilman Pollica, or Mayor Portem Pollica, is there a, a second?
I'll support.
All right, moved by Pollica, supported by Martin. Further discussion?
Just a clarification question, when we go to outside financing for something like this, I know this is a pretty big ticket, are going to our local Ferndale banks to do this an option, or do we always have to go externally to whatever? I mean, when we explore the, I guess what I'm asking is, when we explore the financing options, if there's not a considerable cost, I'd much rather do it with a local establishment.
I could certainly look into that.
All right, thank you.
All right. Other comments or questions? Right, if not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Pollica?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulton.
Yes, thank you. Item is adopted. Thank you, Captain, thank you, chief. Item is, item E is the consideration of the sale of the building and land at 222 East Nine Mile Road, better known as the Ferndale Area District Library, as submitted by the city manager. You want to introduce that item?
I sure can. I have Jenny Marr here as the library director, as well as Judee, one of the board members to help support this motion. We've been working with the library for about a year at this point. They, as you know, they moved into a district library about two years ago, a year and a half ago, feels like forever ago, but for quite a while, we've been helping them become more autonomous, that's one of the goals that they've had. They're to the point now where it's time for them to take a look at the bond payment. For those that don't know, while we own the property in the building, they actually own the bond payment, all of the, to all of the changes that were made to the new building. One of the things they want to take a look at is if we were, if they were to buy that, that land from us, that they could take over the bond payments, allowing them to refinance and save money. And so, one of the things that, when we sat down to talk with them, that it was actually a benefit to both of us, because then they would come off our insurance, as well as the bigger portion of that is that now that bond payment will now come off the city's good faith and credit, so it's a win-win for both the library and the city, as well as just, again, allowing them to be more autonomous, make their own decisions as it relates to the building without having to go through us, just a lot of red tape. We, we pay the bond payment, so there's just a lot there, and it's, again, part of their goal to become more autonomous, as well as, and, and when we started having those conversations and working with our attorneys, kind of find out what that transition might look like, we wanted to take into consideration that we wanted that to be a benefit to the library, making sure that when we sold the property, that it wasn't so overwhelming in cost, that it made no sense for them to take over the bond payment, or it didn't save them money. And, and the mere fact that they've been handling the bond payment, we really kind of focused more on the land value rather than the building, since they were already addressing that. So, in, in working with the library board, we came up with an agreement for a purchase price of $75,000, and once, if council approves that tonight, the library board approved it on Thursday, they can move forward with the refinancing of their bonds, and we will put that, those funds into our fund balance for future use for something, hopefully to maybe help with some improvements in the downtown.
Good news, chief, you get your cameras.
And so, with that, too, just, they're going to, right now, what they'll do if we approve this is then end up coming to us probably in the next few meetings with a small contract for DPW to handle some of the basic maintenance. Right now, it makes, like, it would make sense for them to continue to do ice management on the sidewalks and things like that, but for some of the big, bigger items, they'll be able to go out and, and see what works best for them.
So, still partnering with the library in all areas, except this, again, just allows the more of the freedom that they've been looking for as they move into a district library. If there's any questions, they're here as well.
I was going to say, Jenny or Judee, neither one of you want to address it? Just, yeah. Excellent, good to see you.
Hello, I'm Jenny Marr, director at the library. You know, April and I have been talking about this for a while, this has been a goal of the library board for a long time, I also know as part of the city, and the schools being part of the district library. We just think it would really, like she said, cut out a lot of the red tape, there's been so many times where we're like, is it the city's responsibility, is it the library? And it just would be able to be very clear for everyone what our responsibilities are, we can contract with the city for things that we need, and just also a better fiscal management altogether for, on both sides, you know, to be able to save money, but also know who's responsible for what, and, and just to get things done, so it's the best possible experience for people visiting the library.
Great. Great. So, any, let's see, questions of clarification?
Sure. So, the agreement, once we've sold the district library owns the, owns the property outright, if, not that you would do this, but future generations of librarians and library board, if they decided they wanted to move to the other side of town, for example, there's nothing in this agreement, or we would have no say if they wanted to sell it to Walmart? Correct?
Not under the draft purchase agreement.
But is there a...
Your first rights?
Is there a function in the purchase agreement we could put in first rights to buy it back, or?
Yeah, you, you could have a right of first refusal, should they put it on the market. That, that would require modification of the draft, which, as I understand it, has been approved by the, by the library, I believe.
Yeah, the library board's already approved it at the meeting last week, and it's been signed by our board president.
All right, I have comments, but I just, they were questioning, so.
Had that been discussed at all? I mean, I hadn't even thought about it till now, because you've made such an investment there, I'm, I'm...
Yeah, we still have 10 years of paying for the building, so you got at least that long.
Well, and to be, to be clear, I'm not worried about the present administration. We have a great relationship, you're doing a great job, the partnership's outstanding. I'm thinking 20 years from now, when I'm nowhere near city council or whatever, that, that future boards or cities, you know, government could, someone could go rogue, and I'd...
Is it an addendum or something that could be added on?
I was going to say, Dan, would the, would the idea be not to prohibit the library from selling its building, because it would be your building, but that the city would have the right of...
Right of first refusal, an option.
...so that we could buy it, so that we could preserve it for the city if this rogue board went...
Or control the development of it.
Or, or, you know, I don't know.
The control might be more awkward, but, but it... Well, you don't have to put that in the agreement, but that would be the intent, right?
Well, do you think that would be something that would trouble the library board?
Yeah, it's something we did not think about.
I had neither, to be honest, until just now, so.
Thank you, Dan, for putting that out on the radar.
I didn't think about it until this time either.
You know, if there was an addendum with that, I would speak for the board, but we would take it back and definitely, you know, there would not be a problem.
There was this bizarre article in the paper just the other day, of Amazon said that they would buy somebody's library and then develop it and run it virtually or something, so I suppose there's a possibility unbeknownst to us, that something like that could...
I know the article of which you speak, don't get me started.
Well, I think, if I may add, I, I think this is important to add, and I think we should consider adding that to any time we're dealing with property within the city, is that we always have first, right of first refusal, because we have dealt with issues ourselves where property was 20, 30 years ago, or 40 years ago, back in the 70s, someone did something, and we're looking for these contracts, and we're looking for the language, and we have really a lot of, you know, confusion, so I don't want 40 or 50 years to go by and there'd be confusion about what we did here today.
we did here today.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't think that would be, it seems like, because you could still sell the building, we would just be first in line, basically. So, because I wouldn't want to prohibit your right to do that. But if you don't think your board would mind that, we could still approve this pending that, and pending your board's approval of that addendum, I suppose, correct?
Yeah, let me, if we're ready, I can make a motion to that effect, and, okay, let me clear it up. I would move that we approve the sale of the building and land at two-two-two East and Nine Mile, to the Ferndale District Library, to the terms and conditions as submitted in the packet, in addition, contingent upon approval from the library board of adding a clause of right of first refusal for the city to purchase the property in the event of a sale.
For?
Subsequent sale.
You never said the amount.
No, it wouldn't be. It's a right of first refusal.
Oh, no, but there's not a sale.
Oh, the initial purchase for seventy-five thousand dollars.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we've had a motion and a support. Now, further comments, questions, discussion?
No, a long time coming, huh?
Yeah, I'm excited about it. It feels like the logical thing, maybe even we should have done it before, so I appreciate your word, and, and I really sincerely appreciate Jenny, the way you and April have worked together on these sort of things.
Yeah, we do, too.
And, and the, the way the board has worked, it's, it's just, the relationship feels good, this, it feels logical to me. I do want to just be clear for council, just to, to point out, that the, the way the amendment was written, and I agree with, is that the seventy-five thousand dollars would be put into the general fund balance to be assigned for future use. I know we've, we've been putting the sale of, of city-owned property into a special reserve line for a possible special project with the community foundation. I, I don't think this fits that definition by my...
I agree either.
So, this would not be part of that.
No, I agree.
Okay.
We will keep it separate, thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions? All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Portem Pollock?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, that concludes our regular agenda this evening. Our next item of business would be called a council. Chief Palazzolo, anything from the police department for the good of the community this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. If you remember, back June twenty-fifth, Huntington Bank was robbed. We put out a tweet with some very limited information. That tweet was instrumental into providing a suspect with, and I can't tell you the exact clue, but I will in the future, this individual robbed five banks, including ours and two other locations, he's local, so he's in federal custody right now, but the detective bureau worked doggedly over the couple of weeks with the feds hand in hand, but it was, without that tip and without our detective bureau, the case would not be solved, I don't believe, at this point, so, just wanted to give a kudos out to, to those jocks.
That's awesome. Thank you, great news. Thanks, Chief.
Finally, a tweet worth value.
You don't follow me. No, I don't. How about anything for the recreation department this evening? Avelie filling in for Director Lorena? Good evening.
All right, last week, we had our first park at night, which was a movie in the park, and some vendors and free events at Harding Park. We are proud to say we had about two hundred people show up to watch the movie, participate in some of the activities, families showed up, it was very, very nice, and it was an awesome day, so we, we think, we thank God for that. But it was, it was very nice. The vendor said that he would love to come back and do it again, so we will be paying attention to our dates a little bit better for next year.
Star Wars.
Star Wars, oh, man.
No lobbying for movies.
We'll solicit your, your vote next year.
Don't be.
All right, also, I wanted to speak about the Fusion Festival this, this Saturday at Martin Road. It's going to feature seven gyms that are local, as well as a few that are, are coming in as, as well, with vendors, food trucks, well, food truck, and we're going to be at Martin Road at the Curling Club. Seven gyms, two DJs, two stages, bounce houses, wall climbing, it, it's going to be a very, very fun event, and it's one is very different, just not for Ferndale, but in the region period. So, we're hoping that Ferndale will be the trailblazer with this one, and make it something that's annual. And that's about it from Ferndale Parks and Rec.
All right, any questions from Parks and Rec this evening? No, excellent, thank you. Kara, anything from communications and community engagement this evening?
I don't have any, thank you.
All right, Chief Sullivan, anything else from the fire department?
Yes, sir, we got the band back together, and CERT is reforming. We started out slow, but it's all the hardcore regulars, like in any committee, that are always putting in their time in that. So, we'll be starting kind of a recruitment and getting one else out there that, I have got contacts from probably about ten or twelve people that, just due to the summertime, and them being out of town or that, that are still going to stay involved. So, we have right now about twenty people that are still consistent, but it's going well, and I have the two new firefighters assigned to it, so we have liaison, so that it will not trip or slow down again. Thank you.
Excellent. And I'm sorry, I missed Dan in the back from DPW, always an important department. Anything for the good of the community this evening? Nothing tonight, all right. Any questions of Dan? It just seems like, all right, guess you're off the hook.
It's not a very good hazing.
I know, right?
We'll have to work on that for next time.
Right. Cheryl, anything from finance? All right, Dan, how about HR this evening? Nothing this evening. All right, Jordan, anything from community and economic development this evening?
Yes, as part of the Livernoy Business Support efforts, we're going to be starting the first of four monthly Livernoy stroll events, so we worked with the businesses to kind of do essentially a cash mob on the corridor. The businesses will be doing their own promotion, promotions, Saturday, August eleventh is the first one, so it's coming up, but it's going to be ten AM to four PM. Green Daffodil, for example, got Treat Dreams to come out, they're going to have a special candle that they're releasing for sale for the event. All the other businesses will be going, and we have worked out a, a special contract with Chariot, so we'll have shuttle service running. You can park at the Ferndale High School, the shuttle will run up and down Livernoy during the event, and so they gave us a, a special prorated price related to the contract that we signed with them for the, the deck construction. So, they really working with us to kind of roll this out. That'll be the first of four, again, that's Saturday, August eleventh, and if you go, if you Google B I T dot L Y, so bit.ly, so bit.ly slash Livernoy, you can go and see all of the information we have for the Livernoy businesses. But again, that's Saturday, August eleventh, ten to four.
Excellent, thank you. Joe, anything for the acting city, acting, the Assistant City Manager's office?
Public this evening.
All right, April, anything from the city manager's office?
Sure, I do, I would like to acknowledge, Adam Loomis is one of our newer inspectors. He's actually been here about three years now, I believe. He's actually one of our success stories, that we stopped hiring just code enforcement folks, and we started really taking a look at a more longer-term, more leadership role with, with code, and started making these inspector positions, allowing them to grow in their field. We actually just received certification for what used to be called Act fifty-four, which is now, he's actually a certified building inspector. So, this, again, this has really been helpful in how we have been promoting growth and development within our team, but also, he's becoming such an asset as it relates to, it's helping him navigate stronger, more complex blight issues and things of that nature. So, we consider this one of our very first success stories of really building our leadership and allowing people to grow in areas that will help them in their positions, but also help them elsewhere. So, we continue to believe that we provide the great leadership for our team, and they, that they will have the best resume to go anywhere they want, but they want to stay in Ferndale, and this is a classic, classic example, and he's worked very hard and was incredibly excited to get the certification, so we're really proud of him. So, I just wanted to acknowledge at the city council for allowing us that runway, if you will, to really build up and, and train our, our folks to, to meet their maximum potential. So, that's what I have tonight.
That's awesome. Keeping great employees in Ferndale is always our goal.
That's nice.
Dan?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Martin?
I have nothing tonight.
All right.
Oh, you forgot Marty.
Councilwoman Leaks May?
I have nothing.
Oh. All right, you have nothing this evening?
I have nothing.
Marty, pardon me, I'm skipping everybody this evening.
The election lady would like to announce.
There's a little something going on in August.
There's an election, yes, on Tuesday, August seventh, primary election to nominate the slate of candidates who will be appearing on the November ballot. Please get out and vote, we're having a good turnout with our absentee ballots, and getting a lot of people who are interested. We're hoping that that's going to generate more votes both in August and November, and once again, it's just very important, get out there and vote. Polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. Absentee ballots are available at City Hall. Any questions, please contact the City Clerk's Office, or shoot us an email at elections@ferndalem.gov.
Excellent, great reminder, thank you. Mayor Portem Pollock?
Two things. One, I just want to make a clarification. At call to audience, several members referenced a meeting that we had at six o'clock, and that meeting was really a community economic development meeting, where we talked about a number of issues, and this new housing issue was just one of those topics that Heather referenced. So, I didn't want anyone to think that we were talking in great detail about, you know, the issue of, of RAD, and that we were planning anything, that it really was just Heather sharing with us what was happening up to date, just kind of keeping us posted. So, I did want to make sure that that was clear from our side. And the second thing I wanted to mention was, the last two what's on your mind sessions that I've had, the June and July meetings, no one's attended, and I don't know if it's because the dates or the times weren't good, or maybe it's summer, but August is kind of a crazier month, so I've decided I'm not going to have an August one, and I'll restart it up in, in September, so, that's all I have.
All right.
I'm sure it's summer, just summer.
Yeah, summer is often, great. All right, I don't have any items this evening either, and so the next item of business would be a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager, if the named person requests a closed hearing, which she has, as authorized by MCL fifteen dot two-six-eight A.